Good evening, welcome to the May fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen regular Selectmen's meeting. Selectman Pendergast is not going to be here tonight. The Town Manager is not here tonight, he is out sick. We don't know about Selectmen Plant, we haven't heard from him. The Town Clerk is here, a couple of members of the public. And guests that we'll hear from a little bit later in the evening. Please stand with me and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order is the approval of the meeting minutes for May first, two thousand and eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. First public comment, first public comment is fifteen minutes long. If you have a comment, please step to the microphone, give your name, and address all questions through the chair. No public comment. We have a public hearing tonight on the annual town warrant. We had originally set a date in June to have this, but we found out that the timeline wasn't going to allow it, so we've rescheduled it for tonight. There are forty-some articles. I have read through them all once before, forty-five articles. Actually, I've read through them a couple of different times. Are there any questions from the public on the town warrant? Is this a reminder that the vote will be on June twelfth? The polls are open from eight till eight. Also on the twelfth will be statewide experimenting with ranked choice voting. It won't affect any local elections here particularly. The only elections that will be affected this time for the primary will be the Republican and Democratic primaries for the state offices. I'm hoping to have a workshop on that, because it can be kind of confusing. Most people don't realize how you go about doing ranked choice voting. It's sometimes called instant runoff voting. And hopefully, before June twelfth, we'll have that hearing. If I have no questions on the warrant article, I will close the public hearing. Reports of committees. There's BCTV Committee. Terry is actually up at the schools taping a concert tonight, so she wasn't going to be here. We are still working on the Comcast agreement. There have been a couple of little glitches in it that we're trying to straighten out, but we hope to have that all taken care of in the next couple of weeks. In Vision Berwick, I don't have any information from Vision Berwick.
Nope.
That brings us to appointments, presentations, and other guests. We have Andy Buckman from the American Legion Car Show on the agenda, but he is not here. Oh, you're going to speak for him, okay.
Andy couldn't make it tonight, so he asked me just to request two hundred dollars for the car show for advertising, as he does every year. The show is, oh, my memory.
June third.
June third. And he's got more cars coming this year than ever, so he would like two hundred dollars from contingency fund.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll just say that, you know, since they started doing this car show, it's grown bigger and bigger and every year. It's really become a real draw to the town. And we're hoping, Andy's already been talking to me about it, about how he has more people involved, more cars coming. So hopefully, we pray for good weather. We have a motion in a second, all those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
And that brings us to Port City Architecture. Is here for the fire station public safety building presentation. We've been working the last few months on this. You've heard a lot about it in the past, several meetings. And with that, I will introduce Andy from Port City Architecture.
I'm going to ask Tom and Ed to move so I don't find them. We'll get this going, hopefully.
It's always the technology part.
Can you see?
Yes. Here I come.
Rebecca, can you hit that light switch behind you?
Of course I can.
So Tom said, I'm Andy Highland from Port City Architecture. Some time ago, I guess it's been quite a while ago, we interviewed and were selected to do a study for the town for a new fire station location. So my firm's done, we've done quite a few in the state, big ones, small ones, fire and police stations both. Port City, we've probably done about fifteen or twenty public safety projects in Maine and towns similar to Berwick over the last five years. Starting out in this project, we took a look at, we started looking at some sites. And so the existing fire stations, like right in town on a very small site, there's really no room to expand. The facility was created for really old apparatus, apparatus are much larger today. And the in-town location makes it difficult to respond to cars with some of the traffic and trying to weed through the local streets. So as you can see on the bottom, we looked at a couple of different Pine Hill site, looked at maybe combining it with the police station, and looked at the cemetery road site. We looked at things like, you know, frontage, is there good sightlines if a fire truck's pulling out? Is it centrally located to all of the calls where most of the calls happen? And the cemetery road site really stood out as like the best location for the fire station. So you can see it's across from the historic, there's a historic chapel there, and the site's just really directly across from that cemetery and about six acre. And it's a good usable site as well. Okay, I guess you can try page down there. So this is, so we took a look first at a, and we talked with the fire chief, we talked with the police chief, but really kind of about their needs. Again, we have a lot of experience in this and kind of knowing what towns' needs are for fire equipment and then potentially moving into EMS services and things like that. Even when you contract that out, firefighters are also first on scenes on accidents as well and need to respond to emergencies, medical emergencies, as well as fires. So this looked like a good spot to kind of start in there. The fire station, the apparatus bays on the right, entrance in for volunteers and the public. There's also a small training room that might be used in the public coming in on the left. So we were also asked to take a look at while we were looking at this, maybe if the police were added. So that was our next piece and what we tried to do, I think page down.
Oh, sorry.
So the way we organized this was to really put any combined areas. And when you do do a public safety building, you can kind of combine some areas. There's not necessarily the locker rooms, but you can combine fitness center, combine training rooms. And there's a lot of training that goes on these days in both police and firefighting. It's not like it used to be, I think, most departments probably train like once a week. It's a really demanding profession, especially when you're on a call company and a volunteer. So this just expanded it up the street and I think fits well on the site. Then the public parking and public access is the yellow lines up there, and the professional access and circulation is in the red lines. So we'll take a look at the floor plans. So taking a look at the floor plans, the bays are on the right. We've kind of figured for expansion on this and a couple of drive-through bays on the very far right. We've taken a look at things, you know, this would be, again, expandable if the town were to start doing their own EMS services, that you could use bays for that if that happened in the future. So we want to make sure that it will work for any kind of future scenarios. So we put the entry up on the top left there, administration area, a couple bathrooms outside, offices and administration on the left. The training room is on the far left, that you could have a door right from the parking spaces. Fitness below that, so those were all the shared spaces when we added, if we added the police station to it. Dayroom, we try to keep the sleeping and bunk room and dayrooms on the rear of the building, so you get a little more privacy if you're staying there and it's a little more home-like. So the administration's on the front, the more private living quarters are on the back. And what we found, we try to put in, we try to go a lot to individual bunk rooms these days in that it's, you don't have to worry about male, female, genders, somebody snoring at night. So what we usually do is assign a couple of people to one room per shift. So you might have your wardrobe in there, you might be in that room that night and somebody else the next night or the next shift. And then put in a group bunk room, so if there's a nor'easter, if there's a big, you know, kind of event kind of coming in, a lot of times the firefighters will kind of go to the station. They know they're going to get probably called out, you know, trees down and everything and traffic. So it gives them a little group bunk room to kind of relax in and wade in as well. Again, individual bathrooms and individual laundry across from the bunk rooms. And the trend also is that, you know, more and more towns are, that it's tougher to get call companies and a lot more towns are going to having to go to paid staff and perdem staff. I mean, it used to be that you would live in the town, you'd be five minutes away at work, could get into a call, go, people work further and further away, so it's hard to kind of come in forty-five minutes from your job, you know, somewhere else, get in. So preparing those bunk rooms and preparing that area for, you know, future, maybe some more paid staff is probably a good idea. There's turnout gear, that's where you keep all your, you want to keep your, you know, while your turnout gear, firefighting equipment. Those are lockers that people can come through, grab their gear, and get on the apparatus in the bays. Decon is something that is really important, that you're really lacking in your station now. And that's, you know, a lot of fires have strange chemicals and things like that. It's not just wood fires anymore with all the plastics and things that are in buildings. You're able to get in the decon area, come off the bay, kind of shower that stuff off of your equipment. And then there's apparatus gear washers in there, there's three-bay sterilization sinks. So you really kind of leave any of that contamination out of the living area. So it's dropped off before, when you get off of the equipment and before you get into the bunk room area. So that's an important aspect of the modern firefighting and EMS. On the far right on the back is a little training tower. Again, we try to incorporate training, so there might be a stair and they might also do some hose drying in there, kind of ladder training, climbing in a window in the back. We'll usually put in a little manhole to, you know, so they can practice rescues out of confined spaces, things like that. So we'll use the station as a training tool as well. Okay, next on? So that was all that to the right. If we did pursue moving the police station, then that would be the section onto the left. So you would share that entrance in the middle of the building. There'd be a police admin on the left, office space, division commanders, captains, chiefs, detectives down the side, and all the way to the patrol in the back. And locker rooms in the center of the building. One of the other things that we're kind of missing is evidence, is a good evidence area. That's an important aspect of policing now. So if you do bring in evidence, you really want to put it in a locker and have a chain of custody on any kind of, if it's drugs or weapons or any kind of evidence that you might bring in. So this, the evidence drop is the first one there. And once it goes in, then there's only usually one officer sign that'll kind of process that evidence. It might need to be dried out, you might need to lift fingerprints off of something. And so that gets processed in the lab and then stored securely in the middle of the building. So that prevents people from, you know, claiming that their evidence was tampered with when you really kind of restrict it to a single person. Sally ports in the back, so if they do bring somebody in for booking, there's a secure garage and that they would take somebody out of the back of the car. Booking room in the back with the patrol room, so you always have other patrol officers nearby if somebody got unruly. Holding cells, what are just short-term holding cells, like four hours at max in the booking area. And then also a couple of heated garages too. Again, if there's a nor'easter or some big winter storm, you need some cruisers ready to go and you can't run out there and spend ten minutes sweeping them off. You've got to have them ready when you're ready. So that was, so in this, in the square footage here, the fire station's about seventeen thousand square feet, all on one floor, and the police is about ten on the left. This one, I may have to bring the microphone over, so we're going to open up. So I just wanted to kind of go through. Excuse me. So I just wanted to give you a kind of 3D view of the project. My mouse just doesn't go that far. So this is, this is our, what our conceptual drawings are for, if we just did the fire station. So there's, this is going to be somewhat challenging here, keeping the mic. Yeah, maybe, thank you, thanks. I need a third hand on to manage all this.
There's a mic right on the desk.
Oh, is there? Okay, great, great, thank you. Hello? Am I on? Okay, great, thanks. So this will be the main entrance in here, just kind of a decorative tower. The apparatus bays, we usually, these are fourteen by fourteen doors, which will accommodate any kind of apparatus that they make out there. A lot of towns and yours included, I think, when you don't have a big enough door, you end up needing to buy modified apparatus, which costs a lot more money to make it shorter, smaller, narrower than just the kind of basic firefighting equipment that they sell. So we kind of put a decorative front on here. We've done some sloped roofs to the back that would have rooftop units and that would, this would hide them in the rear. This would be the side entrance into the training area if we did just the fire station. The police, we went fire and police. That was going to add on another ten thousand foot section right here. Gets fairly bigger, but it's still, you know, the site can accommodate the police as well. So you'd still have a central commons shared area for the police and fire. Police on this side, fire department on that side. If you chose, you could, and the reason we did it this way too, you could choose to, you know, defer it maybe if you wanted to. You could still put, if you wanted to relocate the police at a later time, you could do that. These are the sally ports in the back here. Sorry, when I get stuck in a tree, it's kind of, I feel like a kite. And then this is the back of the fire department with two. Then this is the training tower in the back. I'm going to cheat and zip back around here. Maybe, there we go. So that's kind of our conceptual look, kind of wood-framed building with brick veneer, hardy plank siding. So we want to give you materials that'll last, that you're not looking at doing a lot of capital replacements in the future that have a, you know, we're trying to pick up a municipal look, but something that's also kind of in keeping, you know, with Berwick as well. So coming back to... I think I'm like, so, then the burning questions come later. Oh, well, actually, no, before I get there, I need to, I want to go on here as well. So as an option, you know, one thing that we kind of went through, and we can, we're not going back to that one again. It's better if I sit up here. So instead of, as an option, instead of building a brand-new police addition on the fire station, we took a look at the existing police building where it is. And we talked to the police chief about, you know, are there ways that we could maybe remodel your existing building? The chief likes the building in town, you know, and its location, it gets a lot of walk-in traffic. And the police aren't, they're not all in the building waiting to respond, they're always out in their cruiser. So it's different from the fire department that are, you know, have the apparatus in the bay and need to get out of the town that quickly. So this is kind of the way it was remodeled, the gym kind of area, old gym on the left. It currently stands that it's not remodeled. We talked to the police department, they were looking at maybe turning that into a sally port, adding in the connection between the two buildings, maybe three cells, and making some renovations in the building itself. We kind of thought maybe there was a little bit better idea, that would be the next page. And that would be putting the sally port on the right, because as you come in right now, booking is on the right, so that would take somebody from a sally port into booking, remodeling, putting the holding cells in on the right, and then putting evidence processing in the front of the building. So I don't have my pointer with me. But it was just some interior remodeling, a small addition, oh, there you go.
Where do you want me to go?
So that, yeah, this whole area on the bottom right, and right there where you have the hand, right now is the kind of training room and meeting room. What we would propose would be to just kind of fix up the existing gym and make that a large kind of training and meeting room and maybe potential community room as well. So adding a few bathrooms on that side. It's just another idea, we haven't really, the committee's not gone, you know, one way or the other on it. But either of these, Plan A or Plan B, would be substantially less expensive on the police side. And I think that you have put some money into the building already, so it would kind of just build on what you've already done in there. So with that, now I just need to go to one more PDF document, just click it on here. Now to the burning questions. This has been a, so we do this, we do this a lot. I mean, we've built a lot of police and fire stations. We have a lot of dollar history in, you know, knowing what buildings. We did Saco, Cumberland, we just finished, Waterville, Sanford Police. We've done quite a few, we have a good history of prices. Right now, the building, the building climate in southern Maine is like crazy. It's just, you can't get subcontractors. It's the prices, people, instead of not taking your jobs, they're saying, well, I'll do your job for double. So it's been harrowing in the last few months to try to really get pricing, an accurate pricing, for what, you know, conventional construction might cost. And we're talking about, you know, doing it this, you know, next summer. And we're talking about, you know, doing it this, you know, next summer, so if it went for a vote in the fall, kind of working on plans over the winter. And we could still, we could bid it in a really desirable time, which is like February, March, when, after people have come off the holiday break and are, and are freshly looking for work for the new year. What, what we do is, is bring in construction managers also, because again, the prices fluctuate so much. So on the top, on the black, the, the fire estimate, that was 17,000. The construction manager, Landry French, that we hired, they came in with some of the highest prices that we've seen in a long time, which was $279 a square foot for just the building construction. When we say total project cost, that means all the fees, the surveys, the, the furniture, the, you know, appliances, the generator, the IT equipment, the TV sets, everything else. So really, we look at total project cost in there. You can't just get into a building and sit on boxes, you need to have the equipment and the, and the technology to really run the department. So when we added that in, it was 330, and the same, 323 on the police estimate, 230 and 273 is just the base construction. We, when you look down further, Cumberland Fire Station in our recent project data, so we just finished that building, we just had the dedication last week, or this weekend, actually, it was Saturday, we, we had the dedication. That building came in, so it was a brand-new fire station, 13,600 square feet plus 2,900 square feet. We renovated the existing bays. And so the prices were, the total project budget, and that was down, including silverware and the dishes and everything in there, was 4.1 million. So it's a little deceiving, 'cause some of that was renovation, but when I backed out the renovation numbers, it really looks like about $279 a square foot compared to the 330, the 323. Now, I know they're saying things are still going up, we're just pricing another building, and we're at 240. So what we did was, in the red up there, said, "Look, I think, you know, at 250 a foot, you know, we're, you know, we're feeling not confident, safe." Again, it's like, it's, it's crazy out there, but I, I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, just throw a super-high number, you know, at the town. So we, we looked at, said, "Look, let's look at $250 for base cost, and 295 would be with all the furnishings and trimmings, a turnkey job." So as we took those numbers down, in the middle, right above recent project data, so if we took those numbers and did the entire brand-new fire station, brand-new police station on the, on the site out there, the cost was coming up at $8 million. If, what we think is a better option for the town is Option A or B, and that's put some money. So the Option A was kind of what the police had talked to us about. We think for a little bit more, that, that we can actually do a much better job and get a lot of value. So we're really kind of recommending, as the consultant, it would be the, the bottom one, the total new fire station and police Option B for 5.5. In that, in the budget, there's almost 300,000 in just contingency dollars also in that budget. And also, as another option for the town, I, I've run it by some pre-engineered buildings, builders, Patco, I think the town manager had talked to Sheridan. They're running into some of the same problems, 'cause they still have to hire excavators, whether you're doing a pre-engineered building or, you know, a conventionally-built building. Patco had just priced, just like a couple of weeks ago, a limerick fire station, and they were, in the pre-engineered sense, were looking at more like $200 a square foot for the construction cost of it, which would bring that down, so we were looking at 250. And I think, you know, somewhere in there, we could do, and I think this would maybe lend itself, we could do kind of the front facade in that brick, and maybe the rear of the building that was kind of flat, as you remember, in the back, could be more of a pre-engineered facility and still be a nice, you know, building as, as we went. So that would really bring that Option B down to 4.5. So that would be a brand-new fire station, a remodeled police station, and, and, you know, in, in the, in about 4.5 million in a pre-engineered option. So I know I'm throwing a lot out at you, but I think that's kind of where, I think that's, you know, you know, we can kind of give you ideas, give you our experience from what's on, you know, what we've done in other towns. You're not out of line in the sizes necessarily, from what other similar towns, you know, are doing. But, you know, every town has a different, you know, budget, and we, you know, and I think where the, where the committee would like to go would be to find out, you know, where the select board would like to, you know, what the comfort zone, or the comfort zone of the voters in town would be. 'Cause there's a project at everything. I mean, you know, if, if you gave us $3 million, we'd do a really, we'd do $3 million, a really value-oriented fire station. It may not meet, you know, everybody's, you know, needs, but, you know, that, so I'm just getting to, like, here, here's some options. These are what the real conventional costs are. I'm not sugarcoating any of this, and it's probably kind of shocking on, you know, numbers and construction-wise. But, but I think trying to come up with in the next, as we go through, you know, this spring and summer, kind of helping the committee to come up with a direction in there. And I think it's somewhere in direction, you know, the, the new fire station and some Option B. And, and, you know, and we can tighten that number up if necessary, you know, if it's 4.9. And then that kind of helps us to try to, you know, see what, you know, what that kind of solution might look like. So I know it sounds a little backwards on it, but it's, you know, we, I know that both chiefs would rather have something than nothing, and, and I think, you know, kind of working, you know, trying to work toward a number that works for them and works for the town is really our goal in, in here. So I'd say it's somewhere in that 5 million, 5.5 million dollar range, and maybe we, with some pre-engineered building. The thing about that is they're not gonna, over the life cycle, perform probably as well as a conventional building. And you do have to think about your operational costs in the town as well, you know, what you're gonna pay every year to heat and cool it and so on. So our recommendation at this point would be the 5.5, the new fire station and, and a, a nice remodel in the, in the police station. So that's, that is, that's where we're at. If you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer, muddle through, or if you need to digest.
I think digesting, this is, yeah, this is, this is good.
Yeah, so we'll, and we'll continue to meet with the committee and, and so on. I think that it's been a good process. Like I said, you know, we do this a lot, so there's nothing in your, you know, process that's different really from other similar kind of towns. I think the needs are similar, your, your departments are, you know, not trying, they're trying to get what they need, not, you know, extra that they don't need.
Well, they're very, yeah, they're very cautious of, of the bottom line as well, so...
Yep, so, and it's been a pleasure, you know, working with everybody, and we hope to, you know, continue the process as well.
Before you take off, you know, the, no, this has been, this plan we've just looked at, concentrated on the Cemetery Road.
Yes, yeah.
There is still a movement out there to put it in another spot.
Okay.
Is, is, how adaptable is the plan that you have to another site?
It's, it's, I think it's, it's, it's very adaptable. You know, we, you know, we look at, we think that in a, in this kind of situation, I mean, we've done one- and two-story facilities. I usually feel like when you do, you know, when you, when you're around 15,000 on a building to 20,000 is maybe when you consider a second story. But what happens is you get costs, although your footprint grows, you're building two stair towers, you're gonna have to build, even though it's able-bodied firefighters, you gotta build an elevator in the building. You know, so there's, there's costs that kind of mount, you know, in building a two-story. So I, so the other good thing about the one-story piece, and it keeps everybody kind of on the same, you know, level, you're interacting, the chief's interacting, they're not up on the second floor away from everybody else. And so I think that one-story kind of idea would be adaptable. What, what you do need, though, is a decent amount of frontage for the apparatus to exit, you know. And, and we did look at some other sites that, you know, I mean, it could work, but they're not ideal, that would funnel, you know, apparatus out into one lane onto a road, and it's much better if you can get two or three apparatus out at once and quickly, you know, to, to a fire. I mean, you know, think about it, you know, 60 seconds, you know, hold your breath for 60 seconds and, you know, think about, it, it makes a difference. Every minute that, that the first responders can get to you is, is really a crucial minute. So, but, but yeah, so answer, it's adaptable for the right site. And it should be centrally located, you know, you want to be able to make sure that, you know, you get calls, you can get to calls all over the Berwick area. So that's why we liked this site, it was a good central location. You're not near a whole bunch of other houses, people across the street don't care, they're not gonna worry about fire, you know, fire.
I'm just trying to visualize this on Cemetery Road.
It's, it's, it's a big wooded site now, but when we walked it, it's actually, you know, of all, you know, main sites are like notoriously never great. I'm from out west, and when I first came out here as an architect, I'm like, "We're gonna build on this?" You know, it's like, you know, woods and wetlands and holes and ledge and, but for a main site, it's a real, it's pretty good, you know, pretty buildable. So, and, so yeah, and we've taken initial looks at, you know, foundation and perkability and, you know, so those kind of things, all right?
Any further questions? Any questions from the public?
Thank you for the presentation.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Andy.
I'll get you, I got a couple of budgets printed too. Do you need any more of these packets?
Yeah, you might as well leave them, is, well, I'm sure other people want to look at them.
All right. So, and here's, this comes on the back here too.
Oh, great.
I don't like to hand out the budgets early, 'cause that's all you get, that's all you'll ever get. Thank you for saving those for later. Okay, thanks so much, you guys.
All right, have a great night.
Yeah, thank you, Andy. You know, I just want to make a comment, you know, Ed said something about picturing this up on Cemetery Road, is, I live on Cemetery Road, I would prefer not to have it on Cemetery Road personally, but is the, the fire department, and Sam Tibbetts particularly, did a study of where all the calls are coming from, where the growth of the town is, and it's all out the Pine Hill Cemetery Cranberry Meadow Road area. That's one of the reasons they, we started looking out that way. So, is, so if anybody has a nice piece of property, looking for approximately five acres, that they'd be interested, centrally located, town water and sewer would be preferable. But you can always contact us, so...
Well, that's the other thing we're gonna have to do, is run services up to, to meet that as well, so, yeah.
Right, right. Yep. And we could, we wouldn't need to run the sewer up to that site on Cemetery Road, there's enough room and permability for a, a leach field up that way, but we would need to run a water line up. So, that is another added expense.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Have a good trip back. Brings us to unfinished business, is we need to rescind the motion from our May 1st meeting to have the public hearing date for the June 12th election. Is, as I said earlier, we had run into a problem with the timeline, and so that's why we had that public meeting tonight, so...
Who made that motion?
I don't have the minute, could you look at...
Yeah, that's what I'm, I didn't know if you knew off the top of your head. Looks like me, so...
Oh, and I seconded.
Yeah.
That's convenient.
Reverse.
Yep. So I moved that we rescind the motion made on...
May 1st?
May 1st, Selectman meeting to hold a public hearing date for June 5th, 2018.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
One other piece of unfinished business is we voted on the town hall use policy last time, but we did not sign it, so, as we have the form to sign this time. The town manager is not here, he will not be giving his town manager a report. Selectmen's communication is about, the only communication I get is another one from Comcast saying that they're changing channels and probably charging everybody more money. So, seems to get one of those every two weeks. That brings us to approval of accounts payable. I'll see if I can get the month right this time. We have accounts payable warrant 1-8-4-8 from May 3rd, 2018, for the amount of $681,060.98. A water warrant 0-8-4-4 from May 3rd, 2018, for the amount of $4,102.75. A payroll warrant 1-8-4-5 from May 10th, 2018, for the amount of $50,540.61. The account payable warrant 1-8-4-5 from May 10th, 2018, for the amount of $83,486.86. And water warrant 0-8-4-5 from May 10th, 2018, for the amount of $7,407.51. And payroll warrant 1-8-4-6 for May 17th, 2018, for the amount of $48,061.58. And make a motion that we pay our bills.
I get your motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Is, that brings us to new business. Approve the 2018 ballot clerks for the town meeting. I'm assuming those are in a folder?
I didn't give you a list, I'm just gonna read the names.
Okay.
So the following have agreed to be ballot clerks on that day, June 12th. We have Air Marie Carlson, Michelle Valcourt, Lori Jackson, Ron Bigew, Pat Hayward, Eleanor Murphy, Andrea Umet, Sheila Jones, Janice Beeler, Michelle Valcourt again, sorry, Karen Manning, Alan Plastid, Lisa Eustace, and Kim Taylor. And I just need you to okay my list.
I have no issues.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for having them volunteer, or for them volunteering to, to do that, so...
Yeah, it's like, everyone, and then we couldn't do it with...
Yeah, absolutely.
Is, paving bids, is there was a problem with the way they were turned in, I guess, so we're not gonna have those tonight.
Yeah, Steve needs to discuss it with Robert further and probably come back in June.
Okay. All right, we have no quick claim deeds installment contracts, no abatements of supplementals. Second public hearing, the second public hearing is, anybody who has a public comment, please step to the mic, state your name, and let us know what you have to say. state your name, and let us know what you have to say.
Ken Ring, Sidney Drive. I wanna talk about budget. MSAD sixty budget. If this thing is approved, what is that going to do to the tax base?
Is, I don't have the figures for that, I think it's...
Well, the total figures, I added them all up. They, they talk about the regular budget, which is forty-one million, three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, four-hundred-and-fourteen dollars. On top of that, they wanted an addition of four million, six-hundred-and-seventeen dollars, a hundred... Four million, six-hundred-and-seventeen thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight. On top of that, you have adult education, which is coming to about seven thousand... Seven, well, one of them's four-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-eight, another one on there is two-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand, two-forty-six. And then food, nutrition's another hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, for a total of forty-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-nine... Forty-six million, seven-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars.
The, um, the public hearing for the budget is Monday, the twenty-first.
Yeah, I know what time.
So, nothing has been approved yet, that's their...
But I'm wondering what's gonna happen if it's approved.
We don't know, because we don't know the figure yet, so.
These people are out to lunch, whoever did this thing. I think the people ought to get out and be aware of what's going on with this budget.
It's important that people go to the public hearing.
I would certainly agree, I think thirty, thirty people voted last time to approve the budget.
Between the three towns.
Yes, so, yeah, between three towns, that's ten, ten per town, come on, you know, so if, if, you're either part of problem or part of solution, so I highly recommend that anybody who's out there, who's listening right now, get the word out and, and get people to, get people involved, and again, like you just stated, make them aware of, of the, the figures.
That's a large amount of money.
Yeah.
It is.
I don't know.
You know, you talk about forty-six million dollar budget, you know, compared to, you know, the town budget, what is it, four million? Something like that, or?
Well, if you don't vote, you can't complain.
Right, right.
So.
Plus, they have an article, whatever the state gives them later, they want, they want everybody to approve them to use that on top of the total amount of their budget already.
Similar to what they did last year.
Yeah, I, I think it's ridiculous, I think they ought to get their heads together. And I'm wondering what our people that are on that committee are doing for us. It don't look like a hang of a lot.
Yep, is, you know, and that, that's been an ongoing problem, is, you know, is we have mandates brought down by the state that we have to do these things, but there's no money be- behind it. And when Steve Conley, the superintendent, was here, is, the, several years ago, the state proposed something that if we did more work with other districts, that we would actually, you know, save money and, and, you know, be rewarded. And then they changed the policy, and we're actually being punished because we worked with the other school districts this time around.
That's true.
You know, so, it's, you know...
It's a no-win situation.
Right, so, is, you know, is, there've been, I think, you know, I think the superintendent said that there'd been, what, six education commissioners in the last five years in Augusta? So, there's, there's no continuity there. Is, every, everything's just, you know, being thrown up in the air, so.
No, but it is a concern, I know, looking at the bottom line.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken, for bringing that up. Any other comments? We have no executive session, any other business and non-agenda items?
No.
Leave this with one motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Thank you, everybody.